Call the Calaveras County Water District regular meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So before we get started, let's say happy birthday to Bertha.
Is there a special birthday today?
Yes, for you, young lady.
Well, I do want to thank you. This is the second year in a row that you guys have had a CCWD meeting for my birthday.
And obviously, we're on a roll.
We have some nice carrot cake and munchies, so go for that.
I just said happy birthday, acknowledge Bertha's birthday.
When Russ gets here, he could sing happy birthday to her.
We'll have Russ do that, yes.
Oh, that would be special.
As long as we're recording. All right, Rebecca, can we have the roll call, please?
Okay. Director Underhill.
Here.
Director Raderman.
Here.
Director Davidson.
Here.
President Cicada.
Here.
And Director Thomas is on his way.
All righty. So, a public comment. At this time, members of the public may address the board on any non-agendaized item. The public is encouraged to work through staff to place items on the agenda for the board consideration. No action can be taken on matters not listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Any public comment in the audience here? Seeing none here, how about Rebecca online? All righty, no public comment. We'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda. The following items are expected to be routine, non-controversial. Items will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that any item be removed for later discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove 3C, claim summary.
Move for acceptance of 3A, B, D, and E.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none. Rebecca, we've approved items A, B, D, and E, and we'll now discuss item 3C.
It's just kind of like blew my mind. On page 10, we had a bunch of transactions that amounted to half a million dollars on the claim summary, and it was just, whoo.
So that's the view of the higher level that it buy up or approve the question.
And so all of this was?
Yeah, that was all anticipated. It was paid out of the forest trust.
Oh, okay, all right, then. So much for my question.
So, Michael, on those buyouts, is there at some point we can get a report of how many bought up? Kind of like where we are with all that? All righty then. Sound like a plan?
It will be, it is, in fact, we actually had initially, we planned to have the presentation today. We ended up pushing it back, so on March 23rd, the consultant that does our OPEB actuarial will present, will present to the board on that item.
Okay. Any other question? Get a motion to approve item 3C? I move that we approve of items 3C.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none? Item 3C passed with the consent agenda. So moving on to item number four, public hearings. Discussion action regarding updating the water and wastewater capacity fees for Jenny Lind, La Contenta, and Copper Cove. We'll have a presentation with Damon.
Do we have to actually open the public hearing?
Not yet.
Oh.
I have notes.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, directors. As many of you know, CCWD staff have worked extensively over this past year with our consultant, HDR, to update the capacity fees for water and wastewater for Copper Cove, Jenny Lind, and La Contenta. There's been a lot of work throughout that process associated with reviewing contributed capital or the assets that are incorporated into the capacity fees. And so Sean Corn is here from HDR online, and he's going to provide a presentation to y'all about the update of the capacity fees. So without further ado, welcome, Sean.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you all again. I guess see you not there, but this is great as well. And happy birthday, Director, and real good to see you as well again.
And where are you wishing me happy birthday from?
I am sitting in Redmond, Washington, right now.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, thank you.
So, state lines.
That's almost international.
So this afternoon, as Damon spoke about, I'll walk you through the update to the water and wastewater capacity charge study and really talk about some of the key issues and then the results. And if you all want to dive into some of the questions or details that you may have, we definitely can do that. But I wanted to start out by explaining a little bit and a reminder of what capacity charges are. And this is really a one-time charge to new customers connecting to the district's service area. So in this case, we're talking about Copper Cove, Jenny Lind, and La Contenta. So we're just viewing four of those. And the calculation comes back to the value of the capacity in the system or each of the systems and the amount of capacity that a new customer is going to use. So this is a component of your overall funding for your water and sewer utilities, but it's a one-time fee for those new customers. And the purpose of it is to maintain equity between existing customers who have been paying for the system since they became a customer and new customers that are just coming online and joining the team as a rate payer going forward. So as I go through the presentation this afternoon, I'll talk a little bit about the purpose, a little bit about the basis for capacity charges, the methodology, the calculation, and then those next steps. So as we go through the analysis, the whole goal was to update the capacity charges for the four systems, the Jenny Lind and Copper Cove water systems and the Copper Cove and La Contenta sewer systems. And it really, the point of this is, is to come back and evaluate what is in the ground today, what infrastructure is there to provide service, and what new infrastructure is necessary to provide service to those new customers connecting to the system. So as we go through this process, as Damon mentioned, we go through a pretty detailed analysis of all the assets, making sure that we're only including those assets that the district has paid for and then also looking at the capacity available in the existing system, because that would change our overall methodology depending on where customers are at in the system. So if we don't have any available capacity, then we're looking at an incremental fee. If we have both existing and future, we're looking at a combined fee methodology as we go forward. So in your case, we have some capacity in existing assets and infrastructure in each of these systems, but we also need more future improvements to continue to provide service to new customers connecting. So what I'll walk through in the next couple of slides is the methodology and approach to get from our present fees to our calculated fees here on the bottom of this slide. So the basis of establishing our capacity charges on slide four is driven by industry generally accepted principles, and those are outlined in a couple of our manuals. Our AWAM1 manual, our Water and Environment Federation Manual Practice number 27, and then we also have a couple other manuals and books for establishing capacity charges, which go by a lot of different names. System Development Charge is one name. Some folks call them connection fees as they go through this. Now, those generally accepted principles and methodologies then really need to be tailored specifically around the district's systems of each of those systems as well as the legal requirements, which are codified in California Code 66,000 and some important components of 66,000 is 66,013, 16, and 22, which really outlines the basis for developing these fees, how those funds can be used, and the establishment of these fees. To boil it down to one sentence, it really talks about that the fees must be reasonably related to and attributable to the cost of infrastructure improvements made necessary to serve new development. So that's when we think about how your systems are established, we're looking at what facilities and infrastructure is in place today as well as what is necessary in the future. Now, as we go through this, we base it on, again, your specific circumstances and assumptions of your different systems, the two water systems and the two sewer systems. As we do that, we can rely on the master plans for each of those systems to give us key information on how customers use the system, what future projects are necessary, and take a look at how we calculate an equivalent unit. And that really comes back to an equivalent single-family unit, and that's because that's what we're basing our calculation on, and then it gets adjusted for those different types of customers that can connect to the system. Now, key point here, this does not have anything to do with operation and maintenance expenses or O&amp;M. This is a capacity charge based on the value of the system in place that's there to provide service. So this doesn't pay the bills, right, on an ongoing basis? That's why you have your water and sewer rates in place to fund those components.
Yeah, I was questioning, I was, you know, thinking about that, and that's a fact that we can go in and we can raise our rates if necessary. So it has nothing to do with this process.
Yeah, that is correct.
We're not raising our rates, but, you know, we have that leeway, yeah.
Yeah, the other, you know, important distinction, I think, between the two is that, you know, our rate study that we put together for the water and sewer utilities, that is more of a cash flow analysis, right? We're looking at what are revenues, what are expenses? How do we proportionally and equitably collect those costs? A capacity charge is not a cash flow calculation. It's based on the value of the capacity in the systems or the necessary future capacity to provide service. So it's a piece of that funding plan that goes into our water and rate study, but it's independent of those calculations. So the actual methodology is really actually pretty straightforward. There's two pieces to it. There's the existing investment value divided by the total equivalent units that it can serve plus the future cost of providing service dividing generally by the future number of units that we can serve, our equivalent units. We add that together to come up with the maximum allowable charge that the board can implement, and that's based on the analyses we've done to date. What is more challenging and time-consuming is coming up with the pieces that fit in each of those box that we sum together. So the first one is looking at the existing investments. We actually went back through the asset records of the district for each of the systems and worked with staff. Staff did a lot of work on this, looking through history, figuring out what assets were contributed, what were the original values of those assets. And based on that, we can calculate an overall existing investment component. Now, we do back out any existing debt principle because that's being paid through the rates, so we don't want to charge new customers once through the capacity charge and again through rates. So we provide that as a credit, so we don't double count. And then our future pieces, based on the capital plans or what's been outlined in those master plans that are necessary to provide service to customers or that growth component. So, yes.
Can you tell me what the dollar value was that you inserted in the red box and the dollar value that was used for the blue box?
Yes, so I'm going to skip to the end. Yeah, I'll actually, it's a good question. I'm actually, sorry. I'm going to finish one more slide and then, or one more, this right side, and then I will go to that. So we take those values and we divide through by the equivalent units that they can serve, and that's based on our master planning documents. And we call that an ESFU or an equivalent single-family unit. And we do that because we're trying to capture that baseline consumption or wastewater generation based on that calculation. So to answer your question, I'm going to jump to my backpocket slides here, and I'll walk you through, this is the Jenny Lind water calculation. And so our existing water system had a value of $85.6 million. We divide that through by our total ESFUs on the system, which would be 6,533. That gives us a component for the existing system of $13,111. We then back out contributed capital of 20, almost $28 million and do the same math, divide through by the ESFUs for a credit or a reduction of $4,253. Same with the debt service credit, that's the outstanding principle related to the Jenny Lind water system, and we get a credit or a reduction of $233. Then we look at the future capital that's needed. So just the growth component for the system, in this case Jenny Lind, and it's just about $31.7 million. And so we divide that out over all those new customers connecting for a fee of $4,857.
How many?
Go ahead.
Sean, how many is the new projected customers from the blue box? The value says $31.7 million, and the capacity is due future? Isn't that like how many people you expect to connect or units to be used, or no?
Yes, so that 6,533 is the total build-out of that system.
Okay.
So we're using that in this case to divide through by all of the improvements for growth and capital on the system.
Thank you.
What did we determine a water capacity ESFU, how many gallons per day? I know I brought this up in the past.
Just a moment. I don't have that handy or right in front of me, but I have that with me here.
And I also want to know how we've come to that, if we gave any new thought into whether that the gallons per day is an accurate number in today's?
Oops, hold on here. Things are popping up all over the place. I apologize.
Oh, Sean, don't speak of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, it's all based on the master plans, and it's not based on the 195 gallons per day per ESFU, which we had discussed in the past, which is a planning number. When we go to a developer, we use that number. But for the master plan values, they were the actual flow, consumptive use per customer. So we took historical records over, you know, maybe a 10-year period, decade period, looked at the consumptive use, and then our engineers took a kind of an educated guess as to over that 10-year period, what kind of average value is, you know, because it varies from year to year.
So what is it?
Oh, you wanted to, it's in the master plan. I don't know that. It's less than 195.
Thank you for explaining how you got to it.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
So Sean will have the.
Yeah, Sean may have that actual number. It's less than 195.
Thank you, Charles.
Well, at least for sewer, for water, it's.
Yeah. Or, that's right, Charles. So for Jenny Lind, as an example, it was 206.4 gallons per capita per day as outlined in the water master plan.
And that's the actual use based on 10 years of supply?
And what about with the, you know, the conservation? Has that been taken into consideration? If it's 206 gallons a day, conservation going forward?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Well, the thing about Jenny Lind is, you know, most of the lots out there are pretty large, but our most new development is going to be on, you know, 10, 20,000 square foot lot. You know, it's not going to be on three acres in the future. So I just think we need to keep an eye on that. On, because there could be a pretty big disparity if people are irrigating or watering their animals and all that stuff. Those lots aren't going to exist. They're not going to, it's not going to, our future is not going to be that way. That's what the new general plan talks about. They want everything compact. So anyway, just want to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, and looking back at the data in the master plan, you know, it does look at those trends and some of those projections, you know, what needs to be used going forward. So I think as you, like you said, Director Davidson, as you go through this, I think, an update, those numbers could change slightly, right? That 204 could drop over time. But it's also when we implement the fee, we're also basing it on a meter size, so.
That's another question I have.
Yeah.
We want putting 5/8 meters. I mean, it's a domestic water supply, right? I mean, if somebody wants a 1-inch meter, we need to give them a 1-inch meter, right?
Yeah, they need a 1-inch meter for fire flow purposes. They get a 1-inch meter at the same cost as a 5/8 inch meter.
Right, so I don't know, I mean, that, seeing that 5/8 meter, us identify this capacity charge as that, why don't we just call it a residential connection?
I think it, I mean, it's, we're kind of arriving at the same place. This is consistent with the way we do it throughout the district. So we would have different, if we were to change that methodology, I think we would want to do that in all of the service areas. This is only four of our service areas.
Well, correct.
Or two, actually. On the water side, it's actually just two for water meters.
So, question, so if you're going to calculate it just as a water service connection, you're also going to have to contemplate the difference in capacity from a 5/8 to a 1-inch, because at some point in time, it's not going to be for fire protection. It's going to be because they need the 1-inch meter to meet the capacity requirements of whatever it is they're going to build, whether it be a large home or what have you. So I think Michael's, to Michael's point is, is this allows us to kind of refine. If you call it a water service connection, you're still going to have the difference between a 1-inch and a 5/8 inch that should be required to buy into the system, really.
Well, but people don't use more water because they got a base pipe. You know, these fire meters, I mean, and I'm sure we could track that. I mean, we've probably got a few of these 1-inch meters out there now. I mean, are these people using extra water, taking along the showers?
So we look at that annually, and I don't have that information in front of me, but yeah, that is something that we are definitely concerned about, and we review.
But it is, it's also, that's the rationale. That's why we adopted the change in the policy to begin with was under the assumption that the meter size is only being upsized to provide the adequate fire flow, not an increase in water consumption. So that's why there's no, we don't charge the 1-inch meter rate to those residential connections. But I don't, this doesn't change any of that. It's still available to residential customers that need to, that need to upsize the meter for the fire flow.
Okay, well, I just, I just think we should call it something different, but not going to die on the hill.
Okay, I had a question or a comment on the present and calculated capacity charges. Water 5/8 inch meter for Copper Cove is going up $571. For Jenny Lind, it's $197. And then for sewer in Copper Cove, it's going up $959. And, you know, while in fact you did a study about it and, you know, looked at all the factors, one of the things that triggered me to look at this was the fact that you use the word nominal in, you know, there'll be a nominal increase, and I think that we could not use that word, you know.
To some people, it won't be nominal.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that's staff. That's not Sean. Yeah, understood, got it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Sean.
And I'll just take, thank you. I'll just take off right, right from where Director Underhill was. Is, you know, taking those, we do that for each of the systems, looking at the existing value of the system in place today, less a debt credit, less any contributions, plus the future piece, and then we divide through by those future equivalents. And so what you see here on the screen in the red box is the calculated, that's the maximum calculated fee for each of these. And some of the differences in the changes is really based on how it was calculated last in 2006, and the assumptions made as to the capital improvements that were necessary at that point in time versus what's happened since 2006 in each of those systems. What was the actual investment? Plus, what was the future or what is the future need to fund those future projects going forward? And so this is what makes it a little challenging, is that you can't necessarily compare system to system for your systems or to any of your neighboring utilities to try and come back and compare. It's very unique on each system. So, gosh, excuse me. Copper Cove and Jenny Lind water, you'll see, you see the increases there, 571, 197 respectively. For Copper Cove Sewer, it's $959 increase to the calculated maximum fee. And then on La Contenta, just to explain a little bit, there's currently two charges, one for inside AD 604, one for outside, outside AD 604. What we're doing is calculating a fee based on the assets that are necessary to serve those customers in the La Contenta sewer service area, and we have excluded all of those AD 604 assets. So anything in this fee today that we've calculated has nothing to do with the AD 604 funding. So going forward, there's a single fee for new connections within the La Contenta service area as part of that. And so that's a change from where you were in 2006 to where we are today in 2022.
Jeff, any comment on that?
So, so based on the analysis, we calculated the reasonable relationship between the impact of development and the charge to be imposed. We've updated the charges to reflect the current cost and value of that capacity. And so here are some next steps, which are outlined in the staff report and in the packet, is looking for the, moving this forward by ordinance for updating the fees, the water and sewer for Copper Cove, water for Jenny Lind, and sewer for La Contenta. Staff would then go through the process based on board direction on publishing the ordinance. If adopted, they would be, take effect on May 8th or 60 days after the adoption. And then staff has been working with those folks in these areas and will continue to do so as we go forward. And we would also recommend that you continue to adjust these fees annually, and we use the ENR CCI is what we recommend. It's the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, and that provides a basis for an annual update based on changes in the cost of construction. So it looks at concrete and steel and all those different components that are more relevant to the infrastructure that you all put into the system for providing service. And so, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Sean, I was just going to ask, have, or maybe Damon or Charles, here at the district, have we been adjusting these every July 1st? Okay, all right, thank you.
Is it just for any change or any increase? Or is it, does it have to reach a certain level before we do that?
No, it's adjusted every year.
Correct.
Does that have to reach, does that have to reach a certain level?
Okay.
Okay, any other contribution to the presentation?
Oh, I have one more question. The statement that staff will continue outreach, and this is for the. The statement that staff will continue outreach, and this is for the people who are building, is that the outreach that you're doing?
Yeah, this only applies to new connections, so mainly developers or any single, single family new connections that are.
Whenever they file their paperwork, then you.
Yeah, and, and to let people know of the change. That's the one, I guess the one thing we wanted to check, because I think at the engineering committee, we had discussed either, uh, um, an effective date that is either sixty days after the adoption of the ordinance, which is the soonest we can do it, or July first, and we, we, we went with sixty days in this presentation, and we would do some outreach to make sure people are aware of that. But it's sick, yeah, I don't think we have a, I don't think it impacts us negatively either way. The adjustment is based, the annual adjustment is based on the Jul- Jan- January, straight here, the January first, um, inflation number, so impact that at all.
What type of outreach have you done to let those know who might be affected that we're doing this?
So we have had a lot of public meetings on this, either engineering or, or board. Uh, but we also reached out to a few of the individuals in the, especially in the, um, Valley Springs area that we knew would be impacted by this, and have had one-on-one conversations with some developers down there.
And, and reaction is, well, that's the cost of doing business, or that's the cost of new construction, or?
Yeah, I mean, yes, yeah, really.
Okay, uh, well, let's go ahead and open, uh, this public hearing.
One quick, just typo that I noticed, and if, if the board was to adopt this, the Schedule A uh, capacity charges that's in the packet has a reference to a footnote four for the lot, for the five eighths inch meter. And there is no footnote four, I think that's supposed to be a three.
And you'll make that direction, Rebecca? Okay, so no further presentation. Let's open, uh, this public hearing. Do we have any, um, comments from the public? Any here in the room? None. Rebecca, anybody online want to make any comments? All right, so we're hearing no public comments. Let's close the public hearing. And, uh, board, it's back to ask for either further discussion or a motion to adopt the capacity fee changes.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend our previous ordinance and revise our water and wastewater capacity charges for Jenny Lind Lock and Tena and Copper Cove, as outlined in our agenda packet.
Second. All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I, I was waiting to be polled on that, but, uh, I vote in favor of that.
Did, I don't have to poll, right? What I did was fine. So we have, um, all of us say?
Five oh.
Yes, so that passes. All right, moving on to item four B, part of the public hearing process.
Real quick, if I could, just say thank you to Sean, uh, and, too late.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, yeah, this is, this, we put it, oh, is he still there? Okay, good. I'm glad you didn't jump off just yet, Sean. We, this has been a, we spent a lot more time working through this one than we would normally on a capacity fee. Sean's been really, really great resource for us. Um, staff's done, gone back over it multiple times, so, so Charles and Damon, thank you guys for the work that went into it. Um, and I, I think it's a, it's a good outcome, and now let's move on to the others.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Sorry, I didn't say that.
Good to see you.
All right, all right, so now we're moving on to item four B. Discussion action regarding establishing new election district boundaries following the two thousand and twenty U.S. Census. And we're going to begin with Michael's presentation.
Yeah, I don't have a, a ton to present. We, we brought back the slides that we referenced at the last, um, board meeting in case we wanted to look at the map again, uh, or the, the population statistics, but that hasn't changed since the presentation at the last board meeting. Um, the map and the discussion was included in the staff report, so, um, this is for, um, for any public that is joining us for the first time. Um, you know, this is, we, we reviewed this on several different occasions. This is the, the required tenure revisiting of our, uh, Board of Directors districts. We are making changes this time. We did not, ten years ago, the district didn't, decided not to make changes, um, to the map. And this time we've made some changes, we've moved some boundaries. We've tried to reach a better distribution of population among the different districts or just different divisions. Um, and so that, that did require some fairly significant changes, although I think, you know, we also had a, a, um, we also prioritized continuity of communities and, um, they tried to take into account where the dividing lines between particular watersheds are to the extent that we could. Um, but the, as the law requires, the focus primarily being on the distribution of, of population. Um, so after multiple iterations, and thank you, Brad, for a tremendous amount of work in creating a model that had, that ran a bunch of different scenarios. Um, this is the one that, that the board directed staff to bring forward at the last, at the last meeting, and so we're, um.
Here we are.
Here we are.
So I have one question. Um, when you presented this at the meeting a couple of times ago, I think somebody had asked for a map to show what street were affected. You know, did anybody get that offline?
So we sent that to all the board members. We put it in the press release. It's on the website. I don't, I, I could.
It's not a, well, I was going to look.
But it shows like where the boundary is on this tree, so we know it's Highway twenty-sixth this side, that kind of thing.
You can zoom into a very detailed detail.
I don't know that I ever found that.
You just gotta click on the map and get into it, and.
It was a link that we sent out and it, that it's, that is available on the, um, on the website as well, so we can probably pull it up.
Yeah, it was on the website. You can use the press release on there. It was a overlay on the Google Maps, so the secondary area will use Google Maps to find the address, this road, everything else, and this just provided the.
Well, I'm, I'm just still unclear on where, uh, you know, I, I want to make sure that Silver Rapids Road is the, um, is the divide, dividing line between one and five, and then I don't really know how, how, uh, it meanders over to the county line.
Yeah.
Do you want us to, um, move on to, um, new business five A and law staff?
Uh, it should be pretty fast. No, I think we should stick on this item until we get through the public.
While you work on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll just take a few minutes, we'll just.
Rebecca, Michael, you need to try and find it. I don't know who's trying to pull it up. Oh, perfect, there we go.
This is when I'd like to have those little laptops in front of me, because I can't see it. So I'm gonna walk over there and take a look.
We could immediately click on that.
Well, it's just hard to see it sometimes. Oh, there we go. Where are those roads? I haven't grabbed one.
Yes.
Where are you going, Cindy?
I need some water.
Oh.
And I'm just, right here.
Yeah, I'm supposed to really have to see the map, right? Water, say.
What is the old line?
The old line is the pump three. So you can see in this portion that the old line effectively follows the Calvers River downstream of New Hogan. Um, I don't know exactly where you're talking about.
So, yeah, just pull up a little bit, and we'll get there. You're almost there. Or, yeah, just drag it up, uh, north. Yeah, pull it, there we go. So that is Silver Rapids is the, the dividing line right there where it crosses twenty-six. You can probably zoom in on that a little bit more.
The yellow line is the highway and also.
Oh, good. The, the yellow is the highway and Silver Rapids.
Well, the, the yellow on the left side of the screen there is Highway twenty-six. The, the, the winding yellow line on the right side of the screen is the boundary. District five is on the, hmm.
It'll be on the left.
There you go.
And this can work just by clicking on it and?
Yeah, just like you use the Google Maps interface. I think you're seeing the spot where you type in an address if you wanted to see.
Oh, 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 okay.
It's just like.
We got, we, we got this as an email, right?
Yeah.
And a link, yeah.
All right, and I save all my emails so you won't look at it.
Well, it looks just, it looks just like that on, on my laptop.
All right, is there anything more to the presentation?
Not unless there's any questions.
Okay, uh, let's, um, open the public hearing for the establishing new election district boundaries. Do we have any public comment here in the room? No public comment here in the room. What about online, Rebecca?
I don't. It's good.
Okay, seeing no public comment or questions, I want to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Well, I do have one, one question.
Here we are, we're at Board of Directors discussion. Go for it, Scott.
Okay, good, you're so organized today, Cindy, and.
I just love it when it's printed in front of me. I would take that all the time.
Texas trip did you good. Um, we, we had some concern from the Elections Department about following lines that they had created or have been created previously, and that these maps, this map that we're contemplating adopting does do that.
Yes.
Okay, that's the only thing I have.
And I also.
Thanks to extraordinary effort on Brad's part.
And, no, and I do want to, thank you very much, Brad. I do understand that this is a ton of, ton of work, and we have seen a lot of maps over the past month, and good job, and thank you.
So kind of the options here on the table would be to, one, adopt this proposal, number one, or to make a motion, do nothing, and stay with what we have. Is that correct? Those are our options?
Yes, they are.
That is a great question. I'm kind of looking at Matt because I don't, it depends, I guess, if we, did we, did we notice it in a way that would allow for a, a no action option? I guess we can, we can do that.
So, I mean, we have a motion to approve the division boundaries. I guess we could. Yeah, I think we could take, uh, we could take no action if we wanted. We haven't proposed that, I guess.
Right, and so the, but we, we would need direction then to just, you know, if, if we were to go that route, notify the county that we were not changing the boundary lines.
So again, we could either, uh, board, if you have no further questions, if somebody wanted to, well, tell me your. I'm, I'm not going to tell you what I want to do to a call, somebody, I'm not going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion via draft resolution, twenty twenty-two, remember? Thirty, to approve the division boundaries following the two thousand and twenty census.
Do I have a second?
Second, is that as proposed in proposal number, redistricting proposal number one?
We only got one.
Oh, yeah, I, I second, uh, Director Davidson's motion.
Adopting proposal number one. All right, so, um, board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, the adoption passes.
Great job, Bob.
Thank you, Brad, and everybody involved. I know we kind of put pressure on you, but I think sometimes that's our job.
No pressure.
All righty, so, um, Rebecca, you're all good for us to move on? Okay, so, um, does anybody want to sing Happy Birthday Russ to the birthday?
Yeah.
You got those pipes going?
Come on, get them pipes, Russ.
Is this under new business?
I threw it in there. You don't have to, you don't have to.
Well, well, of course.
Here, I got you some water.
Last time I had an opportunity to sing in this room, um, it was my birthday.
Oh, I remember that.
Yes, but, uh.
But you sang the.
Okay, everybody stand up, take a deep breath. We're gonna start right here. Ha, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear birth mom. Happy birthday to you.
I think you gave me chills, I'm bad. Good. Okay, two more. Oh, yeah, that was a bravo for sure.
Oh, my goodness.
I should start every meeting that way.
I know.
It's all pre-recorded.
I was, I was hitting the bass with Jesse in the back of the room. I think that's a good, a good harmony.
Yeah. I think, was that cracking the door there before you?
All right, that was awesome. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Well, this is my, my favorite team.
Yeah. All right, so we're going to move on to new business, item five A, discussion action to approve a McCollum River Middle Fork Pump Station easement, and that's going to be Damon.
Move for people.
I know.
Uh, in consideration of the fact that Jesse Hampton has put in quite a bit of work with Matt on this, I'm going to go ahead and let Jesse provide you.
Yes, see? Hi, Jesse, nice to see you.
Good afternoon. Um, one thing about the no mask thing is you get to see my ugly mug.
That's a beautiful mug.
Bring back the masks.
Yeah, well, almost brought one. Um, no, first, a big shout out to Matt, uh, for his input on all this and his work on all this. So he did quite a bit to help us out on this one, but.
Matt's attorney or Matt's somebody?
Matt Weber. Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, Matt.
Yeah.
Those are billable hours, though.
It's helpful, billable hours. Um, but yeah, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. Um, if you want me to go through a brief summary of this, uh, easement, I can.
I think we're all okay with it. You have a presentation, board, and we're moving on?
We got a motion to second on it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jesse, so much. Uh, you've done a great job, and we read what we needed to, so we're ready to move forward unless we have any, uh, public comment.
Good job, Jesse.
Thanks, Jesse. I'm, I'm.
Really officially, did we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, fine, what about?
During the meeting.
Any public comment on there? Seeing none, uh, board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, passes, five zero. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to reports, item six A, report on January operations and engineering departments, and that's Damon again.
I'm going to try the, uh, the clicker here. Um, so while the, the presentation is coming up, I just want to give everybody an update on, uh, the fact that there's a Clean Fleet Working Group with, with Aqua that's been working, uh, providing presentations to the California Air Resources Board Directors. Uh, we've done four of these presentations, uh, to, uh, folks on the CARB board. And, uh, the last one we had with Director Gideon Krakoff was probably the most fruitful. So Director Krakoff acknowledged that water and wastewater, uh, service workers are first responders, and so there's a thought that if we can look at pushing these vehicles into be, being first responder vehicles, which are exempt from the Clean Fleet requirement, that would facilitate our ability to keep running diesel and gas trucks. So we've got some, first time that we've actually gotten some tangible traction on this issue, so.
Say that, say that again.
That's good. So we met with a director who was very vocal about the fact that, uh, he acknowledged that water and wastewater service workers are first responders, and therefore their vehicles should be contained in the CARB's exemption rule for first responders in the Clean Fleet program. So right now it just has fire and police and EMS in first responder vehicles. So ambulances, fire trucks don't have to comply with the electric vehicle requirement. And for us, it's two thousand and twenty-seven, so when we hit year two thousand and twenty-seven, all model years beyond that have to be electric, right? It, unless you're an. Unless you're an exempt vehicle or you, unless your discipline is exempt. So we're kind of really pushing from the clean fleets working group, the exemption through the fact that we are essentially emergency service workers particularly during wildfire, drought, atmospheric river storm issues.
So is that already approved by the state then? That's a done deal?
It's not a done deal. It's just, it's actually, we actually have somebody that actually opened the door and allowed us to come in and have a conversation. Everybody else has just been.
How handy we bought you all those two new vehicles, huh?
Yeah, this is still a long ways to go. Just to add a little bit to that, that's great news. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that yet. That's potentially a big development. Because that's sort of the best, you know, the first option that I think that, that, that group has been pursuing and Damon's been a huge part of that group. There are other fallback options that were, are exceptions that, that we're also asking for, but if we can get that one, that would be the big, the big win. So that's a, that's a big positive potential development and Damon's been a, a big part of those presentations to each of, CARB is a board, just like this board, there's five members and for each of those presentations Damon's been a big part of those presentations. So really doing.
Is the director, the director that you're talking about, is he on the CARB board?
Yes, right, yeah.
Oh, alright.
So we've spoken with four of the board members and, and most of them are like, yes, I've, I've heard this before and thank you for your input and next presentation, you know, and we're showing them pictures of our pickups up in the snow, fuel and generators, you know, during Christmas, you know what I mean? And we're showing them the power lines across Highway four and we're talking about, okay, well, when the power's out, how do we recharge electric vehicles at charging stations and who trains our mechanics to, you know, fix these vehicles? So we, we're starting to kind of get that dialogue going here.
What, excuse me, what is the status of the charging stations here in the county?
There are no.
No, there's a handful of them, but they're not for that type of.
Copper has.
Our fleet is not ready for that.
Yeah, so for our fleet, it's a weird nexus between PG&E's offering grants for charging stations, but you need to tell them how many electric vehicles you have or that you've put in for purchase in order to receive grant money to build charging stations. And so one of the things that we've really been bringing to the CARB is, is we need it, we need education. So these rural utilities aren't accustomed to having to have charging stations. So somebody needs to come tell us, where do you put the high-powered 480, you know, charge a vacuum on in four hours charging station versus where do you put the, you know, the administrative vehicle charging station? Where do we effectively deploy charging stations versus where do we keep our fleet? Give us some tips and tricks of the trade.
They don't have any.
And who's.
Because they're doing it and then they'll respond and say, oh, now what do we do?
And who's going to pay for the grid upgrades to facilitate that?
We don't have it.
Okay, we, back several months ago, we went up to a meeting, Mountain Counties Meeting in Auburn and they spent the whole day talking about wildfire, wildfire, thinning the, the forests and all that stuff. When is somebody going to take the forest thinning group to, to the CARB board and, and just say, you know, that, that this is an essential activity also?
Yeah, yeah. That's part of the, that is kind of happening in these conversations and I think it, once it's developed some traction, it can actually break off to, to a broader group focused on forest health that they can then talk to the CARB because all of these topics are, are coming up particularly from Truckee Meadows, South Tahoe, CCWD, you know, a lot of the rural folks are really diving in and some of the really huge, like Metropolitan Water District, I mean, they have hundreds of miles of cross-country water line that they have to manage that are in remote areas. So, so everybody's kind of, of, you know, beating the drum, so to speak.
Well, yesterday I, I heard about a Tesla charging station, I think is, is a new one over in Amador County and, and it's, it's powered by a diesel generator. So, think about that. So my recommendation is that you take one of our generators, like a 600 KW generator and put it on a, on a truck and then put a couple of charging stations on the back of that trailer and you can just haul it around the county to charge your vehicles.
We, we, we've brought that up in a, in a very gentle way, we've brought that up to the CARB.
I wouldn't be gentle at all. It's just nonsense.
Yeah.
Just say, hey, you know, I got this mobile charging unit. Can I come charge your car for you and show up in that and see what they say?
We don't have time in the day to do everything. It's nonsensical in California.
So we, so, yeah.
Okay, moving on, here we go.
Okay, so in the spirit of, of continuing on with the traditions that we have, so this is a service line replacement in Rancho Calaveras, three repair clamps on an in-service leak. This also shows you, the, the T in the middle would be from the water main. So this is kind of what a manifold looks like. You have a, a service lateral coming from the main and then it usually tees off to two meter boxes. Let's see if I can get, yeah, it's working. Thank you. So this is a, just a depiction of what corrosion looks like on a surge protection, protector in Myrtle, also in Rancho Calaveras. So this is a two inch teed off a water main, comes up into a box and it has a valve. Pressure reaches X, that valve opens and discharges that excess pressure out of the system. Well, over time, these threads corroded and, and you can see what's called tuberculosis on the inside of the pipe. So our field folks replaced that with the brass and, and copper and then went ahead and plumbed up, yeah.
I got a quick question. I know PG&E gas lines are electrified or have a current running down to avoid stuff like this. Do any water pipes ever do that?
Oh, absolutely. So we have what's called cathodic protection on pipes and there's multiple ways that you can cathodically protect a, like a ductile iron pipe. You can strap kind of a sacrificial anode to the, to the pipe, to the bell and spigot and it'll corrode. You know, the soil has a, has an impact on the corrosion rate of the pipeline. If it's super corrosive, you can strap these zinc anodes and it'll corrode over time. And along certain pipelines, you'll have gauging stations. So you'll see small boxes and some people think that they're air relief valves, but they're actually cathodic protection cords. So you can test whether or not the, the pipeline is, is the cathodic protection is functioning properly or not. So with C900 pipe, it's not such, it's, it's plastic, but the, some of the clamps and the fittings, you need to be sensitive to whether or not you're, you're, you're creating galvanic corrosion. So our folks are really good about, okay, brass and copper, that's great. We're not going to put galvanized, a galvanized stick pipe next to a brass fitting. That's just not going to happen. We find it all the time and we replace it and it results in failures like that, like I just showed you.
Okay.
Dylan, yeah, cool, awesome, thank you. I can, this, aha. So this is often, you know, what we find particularly in, in subdivisions that, you know, the construction might have been started and then stopped or it's, you're right on the edge of a development that might have started to take place. Cindy, I'm sure you, sure you guys see this all the time. This is a, a manhole out the field that was going to be part of a subdivision that somewhere along the way, the lid is gone and there's just a piece of metal over the top. So a huge source of inflow and infiltration in a storm event into the operating sewer system. So often our field folks, and this is Pat and his, Amos and their team went out and found this and you, you seal it up and, you know, half of the work that the collections crew does is searching for iron eye.
We found a couple of them where somebody just tried to put rocks in it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's just makes you feel great. So, so this is kind of one of those, this is really a, an important effort that the Jenny Lynn distribution crew are doing right now. This is the uni, unidirectional flushing effort in Rancho. So that is, that's what iron and manganese looks like and that's just naturally occurring iron and manganese in the source water that most of it gets filtered out in the Jenny Lynn Water Treatment Plant and in the Copper Cove Water Plant, but.
That's from source water.
That's right. And so the microscopic volume that makes it through the treatment system will over time collect and come out a solution in the pipes, in the water mains. And so, you know, periodically if you had a water line break and we don't, and we're not keeping up on the flushing effort, we'll get a lot of calls of colored dirty water because all of this iron manganese has come out into solution, out of solution into the pipe and now it's in folks' house. So unidirectional flushing, what we do is we actually isolate valves within the system to focus the water through a certain path and then we blow it at a high rate. And so this slug was off a cross-country line, Silver Rapids and Heinemann. And so our, our distribution crew turned the water on and I can't remember at what rate, but they turned it on about 25 minutes later, they got the slug. So they were able to calculate how far away the slug or the belly, the low spot of a pipe where all the debris was collecting. And then they flushed it for an hour. And so what happens is, is over time, it gradually clears up and then you move on to, you, you restore your valves and you move on to the next part of the system. And I just can't say enough good things about the engineering department and the distribution crew because this is a, a dual effort. The engineering department runs the hydraulic model, provides recommendations to the distribution crew as to where they should flush and for how long. And then over time, the distribution crew operators have been able to say, hey, you know, this worked, but this didn't work. So they've been able to refine this model over many years. This is the unidirectional flushing effort in Rancho has been going on for quite some time and it'll continue every couple of years we'll do this. So they have 11 days down of flushing. They've exercised 47 different valves. So often when you move a valve, you break off any collected minerals that have been sitting around the valve. You get that out of there also and they've flushed about 105,000 gallons through the system.
How often do you do flushing?
It's usually every couple of years that we unidirectionally flush. So we, we focus that effort and push water, but every year routinely folks will flush kind of the, the low, the low use areas or the dead ends throughout the distributions and that's in all systems. So with that, I just want to say thank you. So this is a picture we talked about in committee or in the last board meeting. There was no picture of this truck. This truck is in the warehouse just down the street here.
So is it as big as those really big blue PG&E trucks?
Not the really big ones.
Which I, every time I see one, I go, oh, there's CCWD 736,000, that vehicle.
It, it depends on what you mean by really big.
Really, really?
That I think utilize the.
Yeah, yeah.
The electrical pulse.
Then you can call this, I would call this like a troubleman's truck where you see the trouble.
But just the average size.
Not really.
But it's a, it's a very well-made truck and we got it for a great price and want to thank you all very much for that.
Well, remember, we said no.
Thank some of them.
No, yeah.
That's true.
I was just trying to give you a lesson that you can't always give what you want.
I, I understood.
I'm sure you're using it and everything's fine.
I have a couple of questions.
Maybe for your birthday present, they would let you ride in the bucket.
Right down the road.
Right, are you ready? Where's my friend?
Oh, we got, we'll find him.
Yeah. All right, any questions for Damon?
Yeah. Eight one one is when you go in and look for other.
Yeah, and I think.
Interesting timing. Go ahead, what's your question?
Well, do we do this a lot, you know?
Well, go ahead. I'm curious to hear the question. I was going to talk about that a little bit.
Oh, no, I just wanted to know. What, what is it?
Michael's going to dive in on. It's super common, but he'll.
I mean, the timing of that question, did you guys record up to that? Cause that, that is remarkable.
My other question, and this was the underground crew? And we've done a, a change to our count, right? We take care of the, the new hire because you're bringing one out of.
Brand new person, yeah, right, yeah. So most of those, three of those positions on the four-person underground crew were filled in, within-house folks.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so there's one brand new, new to CCWD staffer on the crew, yep.
Okay, so it's yours Michael.
Can I just, one, one, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Jeff Cooley. Jeff Cooley's with AARC. They, they did the risk and resilience assessments for CCWD. Brad and Jeff worked closely together on basically assessing what our water district, our water systems overall for risk. And so Jeff's here just to observe the board meeting. We're going to have a tabletop exercise tomorrow. So I just wanted to.
Are you, are you impressed?
I should just say happy.
There's really only one answer to that.
That's right. Nice to be you.
So we had the chance to look at emergency response activities and, and having the board picked out the, like the county EOC and so we developed an updated emergency response plan that dovetails into sort of the county EOC level. I was very impressed that you developed in-house the, the public safety power shut-off plan, probably one of the most comprehensive ones. I've seen kind of a model if you're going to put one of those together, very detailed. It'll be used some tomorrow. So yeah, we're doing a tabletop exercise tomorrow. Kind of, you write in emergency response plan, but how does it, as we're going to complain, because you're not going to use these except as such a major event. So we're going to do a wildfire, wildfire scenario and see, see how it progresses throughout the whole fire and what is a response that would come up and what you can do with each day of the fire.
Well, that was great to hear that, that we're doing that, that tomorrow. Who, and I was very impressed with who's all going to be here from the, from the county and that we're, we're a big part of it. Could you name off a few of the?
So we have John Osborne, yeah, OES Director for the county and we have, NCPA staff will be here, Utica staff will be here, Cal Fire, Fire Department's, you know, Chief Johnson and his team. So a whole host of folks will be here.
Did you reach out to any of the other entity managers like MSD or anything?
I can't remember.
Dan?
May I invite him for you?
And, you know, he's welcome to come, absolutely, yeah.
What times are that and it's here?
It's eight AM, yeah.
Here though, in this room?
Yeah, yeah.
That's impressive that that's, that that's going on and, and I had a good time when there's nothing, you know, not, not a big need to be doing, doing it ahead of when we're going to be needing it.
Right.
Which ripe, ripe in our mind.
Just to reiterate, this was something that we used to do many years ago, right?
This is different. This is a new effort. We have done emergency response plans or different forms of emergency response plans. We've done, you know, exercises to, to run scenarios to test those plans. We participate in other agencies when they do theirs, but this is a, this is a different effort. We've been, yeah, really pleased with the consulting. Glad you're able to be here today. I'm glad to hear that feedback on the PSPS plan because I know Damon and his team put a ton of work into it and continue to update it every year because things change in it and it gets updated all the time. So it's a, a really relevant, useful document when they need it. So, yeah.
We just talked about utilities, quarterly utilities meeting and I'm sorry Dan and I weren't there. It was my first day back in the office.
We may have talked about it, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We're going to have quite a big crowd here tomorrow.
Yeah, yep.
Are you, how many, how long will this?
We anticipate 35 to 40 individuals and it's from eight AM to about one o'clock.
Uh huh, so you serve coffee and.
Yep, serve and coffee, roll up the sleeves and kind of dive into a fair amount of.
You meant something to eat.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, they're going to have to run laps. You know, you get a five-minute break, run around the block, come back in and.
You can come by and sell donuts.
Well, that's awesome. Good job. That's great. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Great work. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, general manager.
So I'm, the, the question about dig wants is a good question just because of, I, I was planning on talking about it a little bit and actually I sent the board an email, but probably haven't seen it yet. It was a few hours ago, just to highlight some of the work that our staff have done. Cause we get inundated at times by those line marking requests and in particular, last year there was a surge of requests that were just, you know, really impossible for us to keep up with. And so our staff were very proactive about reaching out to that contractor, figuring out, you know, what, a way to make it work and, and meet their needs without completely overwhelming our staff. Were able to reach a resolution on that, but also escalated it, the issue to the dig wants board, which is not even, I didn't even know that was a thing. And our staff were great about raising this issue. And so the, what I, the document I sent you earlier today is a, a report from that board that analyzes this issue and really focuses on CCWD is, is essentially kind of a case study because they had the information that our staff had compiled and presented to them. So I was planning on just highlighting that as just a really exceptional work effort. It kind of along the same lines of Damon's involvement in the clean fleets work group and the presentations that they've, that he's been participating in to CARB, you know, where we see issues that are really barriers for us. We're, we're, you know, trying to overcome those barriers as, as, as they hit us, but also trying to under, you know, get to the root cause of those issues and. trying to overcome those barriers as, as, as they hit us, but also trying to under, you know, get to the root cause of those issues and, and raise those issues where they need to be raised. So kudos to staff for great job on that. And that was Tiffany, Kate, Jesse, Kelly up on the pass, Damon, and I'm going to forget people if you don't help me, but I think.
Kelly and Jesse, Tiffany, that group, that core group.
Yeah. Really great effort.
Good job.
Awesome. Thank you.
So the, the good news, I'm going to lead with good news. How about that? Got a, a message from Mia today that we've been waiting for, for a long time.
Oh.
So the, the federal government passed a budget today.
Oh, all right.
Following the news.
That's great.
Imagine if we went five months every year without a budget. I just, you know, it's not a luxury that local agencies have. But they do. They passed a budget today. There were three section 219 projects for California that were included. One of them is ours. Ours is the largest of the three. So there was a, for the, for the $1.3 million project that the federal government will fund 75% of. So essentially a $1 million earmark equivalent, for lack of a better term, was included in the budget that was passed today.
Who's that? Copper Coat?
That's for the copper coat, your shared filter. Right.
All right, Russ.
So that's huge. It was, it's been a long effort. I, I asked Mia today if, if she would call into the meeting so that we could, you know, give credit where it's due and, and express our appreciation for her and, and true to form, she flipped it back and said, nope, this is all the directors for your continued support and ongoing lobbying efforts to get this done. So it was, it was, multiple directors have been involved for, for a couple of years now. So it's great to see it finally come to fruition.
Yeah. Good job, everybody for pulling that off.
That's great.
Our legal affairs committee.
The next step on that, the Army Corps still has to include the, the project in their work plan. But so we're, we're still working with Congressman Clint Doc to get that and make sure that that gets included in the Army Corps work plan. But at, at this point, in my previous years where we've tried to get them to do that, this year they'd have to essentially ignore Congress to do it. And I think we don't think that's, there's much of a chance of that. So we think it's a pretty good lock. The next steps are, you know, because this is a time-sensitive project, working with the Sacramento Army Corps staff to figure out how we're going to implement this project in conjunction with project, other projects we're pursuing that are essentially intertwined to it. So there's definitely some, some challenges and some details that we need to work through going forward.
But is, is there, was there really anything in there that would make us believe that they're going to increase the authorization?
Not in this, but we are definitely still pushing full court press on that because I think that's the, that's the next big goal is to include, to increase the offer authorization up to 10 million for the dam raise. So we're still very much focused on that. And that's the, that's the ultimate goal.
How often are you meeting with the Army Corps and?
We had a meeting with a, a senior Army Corps staffer back in DC last week. But the, really, we need to shift focus now to the Sacramento office. And they were reluctant to meet with us until the money came through. So we're going to immediately ping them now. They may still be reluctant because it's not quite in the work plan yet, but hope, we're hoping that the fact that it was in the, in the budget will get us there because we need to negotiate an agreement with them now at this point and get into the details of it. And the, we're already working with a consultant on the design. We need them to be involved in all, in, in it from the get-go. So we're really hoping they're going to be open to that discussion in the near future. And we are still, Mia also wanted me to mention that we're still bugging their Congressman Clint Doc staff about a site visit. So we're, we're still trying to get that in the works. So that's the good news. The, let's see, a couple of other items. I think the next, the biggest update coming up or, or just as a teaser for the next board meeting is a lot of infrastructure financing talk will be bringing, we presented the five-year CIP to the engineering committee last week. And we'll be bringing that forward to the board at the next meeting, along with the discussion of how to pay for it. And that is a discussion that will start next week at the finance committee.
I was just going to ask, do we fit in there somewhere?
Yeah, absolutely. So those things will, we'll, we'll have that discussion at finance committee next week and those things come together on the 23rd. There, and then in addition to the OPAB actuarial presentation on the 23rd. So a finance-heavy agenda at the next board meeting. The, and then I think along those lines, we're looking at probably shifting the next engineering committee. We just did two in pretty short back-to-back order. The next one will be scheduled for the first week of May, which is the Aqua Conference. So we're, we'll work with the committee members, but we're thinking the last week of April or mid-April for that one.
On that finance committee meeting, it sounds like there's a lot going on in there. Would it benefit us to change it instead of finance committee making like a study session so all board members could go? So we don't have the same thing to repeat, but that's intense.
We're trying to focus that discussion in on the funding plan for the, the CIP. That, and I, and I can't think of Jeff, if there's anything else on the finance committee meeting and agenda.
There's nothing really substantial. As Michael said, we're looking at the financing factors, the funds that are available, matching that with cash flow needs on the five-year CIP. I think that in itself will be a fair significant discussion.
Yeah. So I think it's appropriate for finance.
But then what you're saying, if I hear you, is that why should the finance committee discuss it if we're going to bring it back to the entire board?
Maybe make it as some kind of a where we all meet instead of finances to study.
And then come to the board, right?
And then bring it back to a, an open meeting.
So the, the plan was just the, that, that would be the initial discussion to, to give the finance committee you know, kind of a first look at the details of that and then bring it to the full.
Like it or not and bring stuff back.
Input from the finance committee and then, and then presumably presentation.
So we'll, you know, try and say they got to raise rates, then we're going to say. Is that what we say, Cindy? Yeah, that's what I'm going to say.
Okay. So let's just pull the item and we're ready to go. We got the input.
That's what you're asking. You better go back.
No, that is not. So that, that would be the typical order of things. We've, we've, we've had a, the infrastructure discussion with the engineering committee. We want to dive into the, the dollars a little bit more with finance committee and bring them, bring them both to the full board.
We'll sharpen our pencils.
So this is next Tuesday?
Yes. Although we do need to talk about the time.
Did we change the time since I've been gone?
We were coming in at nine, remember?
In nine?
So is that how the committee wants to do it again? Go ahead. I gather Jeff isn't.
Oh, Jeff.
Yeah. Oh, Jeff.
Recently changed it was nine to accommodate my travel schedule for the last meeting. I will be in Kentucky for this meeting while the meeting goes on, but all tend to be a zoom for teams. So timing for me is not an issue. It was more towards what your needs are for this particular meeting.
So I think the committee members liked the morning meeting, if I remember correctly. So staff is fine either way. We can accommodate.
For a long time?
They're typically, they're usually at one. We did it at nine, I believe, last month.
Probably a special, special committee meeting to decide when you're going to have this.
We'll do that. All right.
What time do you want to do it?
We'll follow up on that separately. We don't have to resolve that right here. So the, the, the biggest update, I think, well, I don't know. They're all big. Not, not trying to pick favorites here, but it's just been a monumental effort over the last few weeks, over the last few months really, but in particular since the beginning of February to get our AMI meters communicating with our finance software. Can't say enough about Jessica and Kelly Richards and Corinne, Kelly, all, all of our Kellys and and our, just our, our finance staff, our admin services staff have been, you know, just putting in extra hours, a tremendous amount of work to try to, to try to make this work. In addition to Damon and Kevin and, and engineering staff who have been working with Mueller on, so we're two different projects, to, to the integration of the two, managing different contractors. It's, it's been, and then, and not to mention the technical difficulty of the, the, the task. So we ended up actually having to delay getting bills out for the Ebbett Pass service area until we had resolved some issues that we're still, we were still working through.
Did we not know that the meters are talking with the new system? I mean, that to me should be not an issue.
That was easy. You're right.
Well, but I mean, somebody should have known that Tyler worked with this meter or doesn't or vice versa.
It does. It's just, it's not.
The problem? What happened?
Yeah, guys, come on. That sounds really.
I mean, it's just that they're not talking together. Is that correct?
At a high level, it is that easy. And the details of getting those things to communicate with each other are extremely complicated and not, not simple.
So we, we stopped putting all the other meters in everywhere else until this gets resolved?
Nope. We're working through it. They're different. They're on different tracks and we've got, that we had a lot of different issues that we had to work through to get billing out and that's been the key.
So if you're having a problem with Arnold and West Point has their meters, does West Point billing have a problem like Arnold does?
Not yet. We're working on that.
Not yet? Because you know the problem and you're fixing it beforehand?
That's right. We have worked through that issue.
Do billing goes out?
We worked through that issue. We got the bills out for the Ebbett Pass service area. We identified.
Quite on time, but.
Not quite on time, but we got them out. We identified, you know, multiple issues. I think really the, the part of the challenge here was that, you know, it's hard to troubleshoot when you're dealing with multiple moving parts and multiple problems. And so it was a process of working through one challenge, getting to the end of that challenge and realizing that there was another one right behind it and then working through that one. And on, on, you know, multiple times going through that. So it was that we worked through a lot of those challenges. We're working now on making sure that as we move into the next cycle, we won't have to go through quite that same level of effort to get the bills out. So that's, that's all part of the process.
So do we talk about the billing system? Are we talking about infrastructure? Would, just what exactly, you know, causes these problems?
It's the commu, it's the communication between the meters and the finance software, which is a challenging thing to do, you know, any, in any event. And we were, you know, we, we replaced the utility billing software right before we started switching out these meters. And so integrating the, the new radio read meters and getting accurate data from the radio read meter project into the utility billing software is really where the challenge has been.
So do you guys know what the problem is and there's a fix in place or being? So this is Arnold. Are all the other, like, are the meters all installed in Copperopolis? That's a huge area. Do we have that problem or do we don't know?
We have installed almost all of them in copper.
But is the billing, are we going to have the same problem that you did elsewhere?
So there were, I think, eight or 10 different issues that we identified this last time around that we had to work through.
And could I ask whose, whose fault would be the Tyler side or the radio side? Who didn't know they weren't communicating? I mean, why was that not known even before?
This is not on our agenda. We're getting deep into something that's not even on our agenda.
Like to me, like.
It's under general manager's report. He's no longer reporting. Now it's an issue that we're all talking about and that's.
Taking some action, but anyhow, maybe it sounds like we should bring it to an agenda item so we can ask all these questions.
I think that's a great idea. I think once we've worked through this next billing cycle, we'll be at a, at a better place. We've already started that process of, of going back over to figure out, you know, what, what went wrong and where, so that we can, with the immediate focus being on the next billing cycle, so that we fix those issues going into the next billing cycle and smooth it out over time, but be happy to report back to the board on that.
I would like to have that on an agenda item in the next meeting and find out, why did it happen? Why did one side didn't check with the other? I mean, I do accounting conversions. We all have been part of this. And somebody should have asked that question. They got to be able to talk when like QuickBooks integrates with Excel. They're not talking or something. So what happened? You know, and everybody makes mistakes. But this is kind of a big deal for us. So we should, we should know. So it doesn't happen again. You know, what, wherever it happened, we just got to identify. No, but you know what I'm saying? It's a good lesson to learn because, you know, mistakes are made regardless, but to know what happened. So five years from now, you might be converting something for the mechanic shop or whatever. At least you'll know, hey, we're not going to do that again, whether it was, you know, who it was. Okay. Enough said. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Uh, that's all I have.
That's all you got. That's all.
He's not going to talk anymore.
That's all he can take.
Yes. All right. So board reports, information, future agenda items. I'm going to go out of order just because. So I'm going to go with Scott first.
Okay. Wow. I never get to.
I like to mix it up.
Okay.
You weren't ready.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm ready. Hey, I can't make it to the April 13th meeting. I will be out of, out of town. And as Jesse mentioned, it's no longer wearing masks. That's fantastic. It's great to see everyone smiling faces in the room and pretty soon, hopefully we'll have some public showing up at these meetings. I, I do want to note, I saw an email about the Moke Hill or the, the McQualmy Water Battery Project is having a a presentation on, this is the Bear River project up, up, way up on the, up on the McQualmy River. On, on March 31st from two to five, there's a and, and someone, I don't know if you've got, it's, it's a virtual, it's a virtual presentation online from two to five. It's a very interesting project. We talked about it and had a presentation at Camera a couple of months ago. I mean, I know all the Camera, Camera members got an email on it from Kate, who is our secretary. I don't know if you've, if you've got it or if, if you guys are interested. Anyway, it's very.
I would like to see it. He may have sent it, but I'll watch.
It's the Moke, McQualmy Water Battery Project. And it's a, and it's going through a FERC, FERC process right now. And it's going to be, I mean, probably a 10-year process, but it's very interesting concept and, and I think it is, looks like it's moving forward. And it's been talked about for two, two or three years. And it's just an interesting thing to maybe take a look at.
It's March.
March 31st from two P M. Starts at two P M.
And it's remote.
And the other thing I, I'd last thing, I, I just glanced at our parking wreck. I know that the parking wreck, Russ, I, I know that there's, that we now have a actual parking wreck department. It's got funds and I don't know if, if we have time for some sort of what's going on or if, if there's anything going on with Parks and Recs in the county. I know you're on that committee. I just, just was curious, kind of came up and was going to call, but not, not today, just to, to get something from what's going on with, with the parking wreck and what are the commissioners doing? What's that? What's the parking wreck look like now?
So are you telling him you want him to go to a meeting or something?
He goes to all meetings. But I just want to see what, just a, a short, two-minute presentation of what.
It's going to take hours.
He's giving you two minutes.
We can't talk about it now because it's, we're in the middle of reports, but some, some point in the future.
It's not on the agenda either.
Nope, it's not.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Jeff.
I have nothing to report.
And Mr. Thomas?
Scott is angry because he didn't get reappointed to that Parks and Recreation.
Oh, is that what this is all about?
No, it, actually that's one of the things I wanted to mention is that the, the group is really quite, quite active. Some very bright people with one exception, me on the, on that commission.
Well, maybe have someone else come report for us.
No, I'd be glad to report on that.
Well, I'm surprised you have money. That's what.
Well, I think he's wrong about that. We're, we're, we're always looking for money, but.
Scott said you had some.
Having a big say.
Yeah. Is that it?
No, is that my, my turn? I do want to report also a very positive development in the Copperopolis area that the, the Copperopolis Area Business Association, also fondly known as KABA, is, has been reactivated and they've, they've got some energetic people working toward building a more robust business environment down there. Kind of like a Chamber of Commerce light version. But went to their last meeting, which incidentally, the meeting was held upstairs in the formerly known Copper Town Square. There's a gentleman down there that. There's a gentleman down there that has a company called Accurate Estimates. And he has taken upon himself to, to take on a, an area in, in the building that's about half the size of, of this room. It's a conference center down there. He's got Wi-Fi and, and cameras and, and projectors and stuff. And it was just like walking into the, uh, uh, meeting room at a fancy hotel or something. It's really, really cool. So it just might keep that in mind if you wanna schedule a meeting.
Does he like that meeting? He leases it or?
Yeah, yeah, he just rents it out. And for this, he, he's a member of that organization, the KABA organization, so he just did it for free. But anyway, I, I, I hope that he will be able to generate some revenue from it. See if I can push some businesses away. So that's it. That's all for me.
Hey, birthday. Thank you.
Okay, I'm eating my lunch because of the delay and all of the field forces know that. And my God, it's gonna last another month and a half possibly, cleaning the.
I'm driving the road.
Cleaning the trees on Highway 4. So it is bad. It is really bad. I'm just, you know, you just have to really plan.
Take Sheep Ranch.
They're coming to Sheep Ranch. Okay, um, tomorrow at, um, nine o'clock, I believe, there's a, uh, Aqua Legislative Symposium and it's entitled, Speaking of Water. Did you hear about that one?
I did, yes.
Okay, so that should be interesting. And so the delay and that, and I still have snow in my yard if anybody, if your kids wanna come over and build snow. Snow, I still got snow. That's it.
All right, well, happy birthday. So, um, for the T-Stan IRW, and there's no JPA meeting this month, so that's kinda nice. I'd like to talk about a couple of future agenda items. But before I get to that, when I heard him saying a conference center, I, I wanted to talk to Michael about, and Jess, about doing our hometown meetings. And on the way here, I was thinking of somehow to get, you know, some of these people further away, West Point, you know, copper and whatnot, with the price of gas. If we could, let's say if I did a remote meeting from someplace in, in West Point, we have to, you know, agendize it and notify there for like this regular meeting. If I could be there and have members of the public there to let them know that, you know, if they wanna participate, they don't have to drive here. Maybe they don't have the remote possibility, but we could do something in each district. Have that, you know, their representative there. Just, just another way, maybe in lieu of a town hall, just help them to participate with the meeting. So maybe that's something to think about. You could do the same thing in copper at that nice remote place. But just something, you know, more customer outreach to get them involved with our regular meetings would be nice. The other thing, when I was looking at the engineering committee agenda, I saw the policy for grease traps and commercial businesses. And I would like to see that policy come to the board, perhaps a study session prior to staff saying, here's what we recommend. Not that we don't like your recommendations, but I'm wondering how, I, I, I think, well, is there any other board member that's interested in reviewing that policy for grease traps? Maybe making CCWD contributing a little bit more to the county to making commercial businesses a little bit more open throughout the county to have, um, commercial businesses come here, you know, helping some economic, um, you know, I'm always saying.
I, I would be in favor of that.
But you know, just, and I would like to have a, a study session or we can make it part of a meeting. I prefer a study session so we can talk about it with staff, with the county, with other entities. The grease traps is what caught my eye. You know, with me being with MSD, we deal with those a lot. And what I saw on there was like the minimum grease trap is 500 gallon. And I personally think that is not acceptable. You know, everybody's not cookie cutter. It's not the same. But if we all get together to, one, identify some of the issues, that's the one with me. And identify some ways that we could be a little bit more open arms, if you will, to get businesses to come here and not make it so hard when it comes to water and sewer, if that is in fact a problem for them. And have somebody from the county, the environmental health be here. And I would invite Operations Manager MSD and maybe somebody else. Just get a little group together to talk about these and maybe all the other entities, we can come up with a game plan that works. We know that the fat soil and grease program is extremely important to have those grease traps. And I don't wanna say we don't need them because we know that's not true. But how does the other board feel about that? Is that something you guys would like to get involved in? Like, ahead of time, let's review our current policy, talk about the issues, if any, and then have staff bring back, um, a policy based on the recommendations if everybody at the meeting. Anybody interested? You are. Anybody else?
We just, we just had a, a presentation at the Engineering Committee. I don't know why we wouldn't wanna bring that to the full board, add it, just add it to our agenda. I mean, that policy is old. It was 85, hasn't been updated since then.
Waste water code, yeah, not the grease trap, the wastewater code. Which, yeah, which is something that we talked about in Engineering Committee as being. Yes, and we acknowledge, I mean, all of us, that, yeah, there's definitely some, some items, certain wastewater code that we should look at reviewing. But the grease trap policy, which is part of the SSMP, which is, you, you all approved an audit to the SSMP in June of last year, which has the, refers to the grease trap policy, you know, as it's a critical component of that.
Yeah, we know we need that, but I wanna see some flexibility because I have that one customer up in West Point. I know you guys are doing a great job working with them, but I don't want it to hinder others from potentially bringing in maybe a new business. Even here in San Andreas, even though that's not our spot, but what if San Andreas wants to come to this meeting and talk about some of the issues? And I think it goes a little bit further than just the grease traps. It's more, how could we help Calaveras County get a little bit more businesses going out to open back up or coming out of COVID? You know, let's make this economy a little bit better and let's be part of that instead of them coming to us and saying, oh, man, you know, we gotta have, how big of a grease trap? 1,500 gallons and I'm serving pizza or whatever? So I would like to make it something that perhaps makes CCWD stand out as somebody wanting to contribute and help proactively instead of responding to people's requirements in our ordinance.
Well, I have no opposition to it. Sounds like an opportunity.
That sounds fine with me that, you know, there's some people who have to do a lot of reading on grease traps. Well.
Well, it's, it's overdue though. And at the meeting, Director Davidson made a powerful statement and it really kinda resonated with me that, um, our county, our, our, our district provides a very significant and painful disincentive to, to, not only on grease traps, but just the whole methodology of, of arriving at sewer fees and, and the collection of the monies that are required. And, and I, I don't know, I, I would be very much in favor of, of the board getting involved at, at, at a, at the very foundation of examining that policy rather than having our very capable staff work out three different options and bring it back to us. You know, that, that, that may not give us enough opportunity to kick around all, all of the possibilities.
And look, the time that you spend putting together these three options, when if we met you at the ground level before you did that, you would be able to hear from us what direction we're going to where you could bring one thing back and it's done deal approved. You know what I mean? Instead of coming up with all the options. And that's the way that I see it, but how do you feel about having some others be part of this and potentially get all the entities that, you know, serve commercial water and sewer to get involved and make it, you know, Calaveras is trying to be, you know, proactively.
Proactive. From our side, who are the people who work on bringing?
Well, so just, if I could just jump in here real quick, um, and, and we should probably agendize this to, to bring back the discussion. But, you know, I think this is where, what happened in Engineering Committee because we did bring this. And we weren't staffed and bring policy recommendations. We brought it as a discussion item to review the existing policy, talk about areas where it might need to be updated, and that's the, the, the work effort that we have right now. The other thing, though, that this very quickly ties into, we've already alluded to it here, is our, our, it, it, it very quickly leads to how this relates to capacity, how we allocate capacity in general, how we charge commercial accounts, our billing structure and our rate structure, which are also things that we are, current staff is currently reviewing for other reasons, which is a much bigger discussion and a much more complicated discussion. This is really one small piece. The, the fat soil grease policy is really one small piece of a much bigger, more complicated issue. So if we were gonna workshop an item, I would think that would be the item that we bring back and look at the whole thing. If we just wanna hone in on fat soil grease, that, that aspect of it. I'm not sure we need a whole workshop just to focus on that aspect of it. We should bring it back to the board.
Well, I would like it to be where we look at the policy, and it could be a little broader, in my opinion, to identify the areas that we think need repair. Now, obviously, the rate part, we can't get into it. But if we have the first portion of this be where we as a board, because our job is to develop policy, where do we feel that the need for change is? And we can identify, we can talk about the fat soil and grease, the rates that is your department. And so we would carve it out, saying, okay, we can't do that, but we don't like it for whatever reasons that may or may not be. But I would like the study session reviewing the whole commercial aspect of doing business in Calaveras County or with Calaveras County Water District and then carving out what we are allowed to do versus, you know, what you just said, Michael, is out of our reach, right?
And, yeah, there's also gonna be regulatory constraints.
Yeah, even with the fat soil and grease, but.
Right.
I just like the idea that, um, you know, that we just wanna be more open for everybody and, and why not get some business owners in here to have their input as well? Okay, so, um, you will work offline to try and put together a schedule for us to get.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, we want a, a study session outside, so a special board meeting.
Yes.
Where we talk about commercial, our, our policy on the wastewater side, it sounds like is what we're focusing on here.
Right.
Our, our commercial connection policy.
Yeah.
For wastewater.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you don't want staff to bring recommendations?
No, I, I want it to be just kind of a, let's all just kinda talk about it. And I know staff will read it from front to back, and that's perfect because you could help us. In fact, make sure that we all have a copy of it prior to the meeting, like, maybe tomorrow, get us a copy so we can all be prepared. You know, we may not meet for a month or so, but I would like to delve into it more than I did just from the Engineering Committee, and I think it was only that one section.
At, at this point, Cindy, are you asking it be done internally?
I just want a copy of the.
No, 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 the meeting itself, will it be?
No, I, I wanna, I'll work with Mike to, if he wants me to, to invite others. I, I think it'd be important to get the county environmental health, if nothing else. And if any other local entity that provides sewer and water wants to come, I'd love to hear what they have to say. If they have any issues or not, or what do they do? How do they treat it? You know, that kind of a thing. So it might be something that's still in April or whatever. And I said that about the remote meetings. I think I'm good. All right, so, uh, next board meeting, Wednesday, March 23rd and Wednesday, April 13th. So now we'll be going into closed session, uh, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to potential litigation, Government Code Section 54956.
We're, we're dispersing everybody, but no one's had a piece of cake.
Okay, let's, um, let's, um, let's go into closed session, but we'll do a five-minute recess. Is that enough to have cake?
Yeah, cake.
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 Let them eat cake.
All right, let's have a piece of cake. Yes.
Those are the only two.
It's an apple. And so it's like.